Good evening. I call this meeting to order. Did you hear the roll call please this time?
Ms. Williams.
Here.
Ms. Garcia.
Here.
Ms. Miller.
Here.
Ms. Chesney.
Here.
Mr. Garry.
Present.
Ms. Lanning.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
I'll stand for the pleasure of the ladies, please. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All members of the district, join me to the front, please. And we will skip A and C until next month unless we begin with Triumph donations. Good evening. I'm not sure if this is on. Is that working?
It's gone. No, it's on. It's gone.
I can't see the top. What if it's... Oh, it is. Can you hear me? It's not on. The battery's dead. It's all right, I can talk loud, so we'll be fine. We are so honored to have Triumph Foods here tonight to present a donation to the St. Joseph's School District. For the past five years, they have supported SJSD with contributions of $25,000 per year. The funds are used to support multiple groups of students, including newcomers, migrants, refugees, and high school students. This grant also supports the promotion of technical programs at Hilliard Technical School with ELD families. We are so thankful for Triumph's support for our English-language learners and for this community partnership. And with us tonight, we have Matt England, Chief Executive Officer, Josh Kleinland, Chief Financial Officer, Nora Allen, Communications Analyst, and Lynn DeLee, Communications Analyst. And then we have Michelle Scholes, who is our ELD Coordinator. Thank you so much.
Oh, no, I'm not sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, tonight, we want to recognize the dedicated men and women who serve on our school board. We celebrate their tireless commitment, their vision, and their crucial role they play in shaping the future of our school and, most importantly, the future of our students. They are the stewards of the public education system, tasked with ensuring that our schools provide a nurturing and effective environment where all students can thrive. Their service is not easy and often comes with tough decisions. They are advocates for public education, champions for equitable opportunities, and leaders who are ensuring that our schools are prepared for the challenges and opportunities of tomorrow. Tonight, let us express our gratitude and appreciation for the vision they bring, the dedication they offer, and the lasting impact they make on the education system. Thank you for your unwavering service, your commitment to excellence, and for being true champions of public education. Let's give them a round of applause for all they do.
All right. We had a pretty historic end to a great winter season. Not too many chances like this. I'm kind of honored and privileged to do this because I don't think I've ever been in a position where I've gotten to announce this kind of accomplishment, especially from one school. We'll start with the Benton Girls Basketball Team. The Benton Girls Basketball Team finished second place in state, eight runner-up in Class Four this year. They started, I mean, they battled their schedule this year as built. They were 24-7, but I will tell you, they played every, they took every chance to play teams that were bigger than them, better than them. They knew they had a bigger goal in mind. With that in hand, 24-7, they were undefeated conference champions in the Midland Empire Conference. They went through district pretty easily. And I know there was a stout test from their cross-city rival in district. That may have been one of their toughest games until that last game on Saturday down at state. I will tell you that with these girls, I mean, there's a lot of, you know, Benton Girls program has had a lot of state championship. And it's very probably unfortunate, thanks Brett for setting that high bar. But, you know, when you have three out of four years with these seniors that they play second state, a lot of people will say, "Well, you know, that's just kind of disappointing." That is far from disappointing as you can get. Three out of four years to have that same level of excellence and commitment and standards to, I mean, to themselves, to their teammates, to their coaches, and to their school is remarkable. And so, I'm very, very honored. I'm going to invite Chris Michaels, the head coach, if he wants to come up and say anything about his team. I'm very proud to present the Benton Girls Basketball Team with this recognition tonight for their second-place finish in the Class Four State Championships.
I don't have a lot to say. I still don't have a lot of voice for some reason. We just appreciate all the support we've had all year. For even throughout state, we had people, it didn't matter if you wore red all year, if you were in green or blue, they came around and supported us when we made it. That means a lot to us, and so we appreciate all that and everything everybody's done for us. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, you're going to look at me, big smiles. Awesome, congratulations.
Great job. Great job, girls, coaches, everybody. And like I said, it's pretty special. Usually, one team to be in this position, to be able to honor is pretty special, but we've got two, okay? The Benton Boys Basketball Team also finished second place in the Class Four State Championships. They also were undefeated conference champions, running away with that conference and pretty easily, okay? They had some battles, but it was, they dominated. I will always say that. Their record was 28-4. They, again, I mean, I've never seen two teams that want to go out and seek out the competition that both these wanted to seek out, but they played some high-level competition because they knew, again, they had a bigger goal in mind. You know, this is legendary. You know, we talked about the tradition that the girls had built, okay? The boys, on the boys' side, is not, I mean, they've been always competitive. They've been right there, just really, really close. And just maybe a game or two right there before, you know, at the district level or right after that kept them away from it. I know Coach Boone's been a part of some great teams at Benton, okay? But this is legendary because the first time since 1941, they're in a state championship game, over 80 years. So this set, this team is remarkable because they just now flipped the script and restarted the history books for Benton Boys Basketball. So at this time, I would bring Coach Boone up here and congratulate the Benton Boys Basketball Team on their second-place finish.
Kind of like Chris, I mean, you know, for me, this was extra special, just being able to rewrite the history books. I mean, it's been a long time since we've been in this position. And, you know, it was just exciting. These last few weeks have been a ton of fun. You know, I know the boys enjoyed it, the parents enjoyed it, the community, the city. I mean, same like Chris said, you know, we united the city, you know, for however long it was, you know, the city was united. You know, that was awesome. And so I just can't thank you guys enough for your support and, you know, dedication to us. And I mean, hopefully, we can do it all again next year.
There you go.
Okay. We have one for audience participation. Raylan Stroud.
Good evening, members of the school board. On behalf of the St. Joseph's School District's MSTAN, I'm here to express our sincere gratitude by honoring you during Missouri's School Board Appreciation Month. As a token of our appreciation, we have donated on your behalf two inspiring book titles to our secondary schools. "Not an Easy Win" by Crystal Giles has been purchased for our middle schools, and "Res Ball" by Byron Graves has been purchased for our high schools. Both of these are stories of resilience, determination, and the power of education, values that reflect the work you do for our district every day. These books will serve as a lasting reminder of your impact, inspiring students for years to come. Thank you for your leadership, your advocacy, and your commitment to the success of our schools. We appreciate you.
Okay, approval of the agenda. Is there motion?
We need to amend it because Item 2C, which is already taken off for Spring Garden Student Council, and 2A, Joel Huntsman, both of those need to be moved to April when those people can be in attendance.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Sorry, Kim. When you're ready, you can call the vote, please.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Lanning. Mr. Garry.
Yes.
Ms. Chesney.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Garcia.
Yes.
Yes, and the motion passes? Seven-zero. Consent agenda. Is there a motion for approval? Thank you, Whitney, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mike.
I do want you to know that I received questions on the consent agenda regarding C, D, and E. And they will, academic services will touch base on those in the Assistant Superintendent Academic Report.
Are they questions that we should remove those and to vote individually, or?
No questions, it's just, they just wanted them highlighted. So we voted to put these on the consent agenda, I don't know, back in August.
Uh-huh.
And if there were any questions, then they needed to be brought, to be voted on within the action items. But there are no specific questions, they just want them to be highlighted. The board member wanted them to be highlighted.
So then you should take them out, but I digress.
And the information that you're going to be giving as a portion of your report, will it, like, affect approval of the board?
I don't anticipate it to. I was just going to highlight some of the pieces that are in the attachments. I'm happy to do that now, if you would rather me go over that now before you vote.
In order to do that, we would need to remove those items to the action items. Vote on the remaining consent agenda items and then discuss those.
I'll do whatever you guys want. Don't be, revise my motion to remove C, D, and E. I'll revise my motion to remove C, D, and E.
Are you okay with that, Mike?
I am.
Okay. Okay, would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Ms. Garcia. Ms. Miller.
They're just going to be brought down below, correct? Or just underneath the academics, correct?
They will be action items.
Yes.
Ms. Chesney.
Yes.
Mr. Garry.
Yes.
Ms. Lanning.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
And the motion passes with one abstention? Okay, admin report.
Okay, in the, for the superintendent's report tonight, I wanted to touch base on three items. The first one I'm going to start with is the Long Range Plan. I just wanted to give some updates as to some of the questions that we're receiving in regards to what happens next and where the Long Range Plan stated we were going. I thought it'd be a good opportunity tonight to provide some background information in regards to that. So first of all, obviously, you know, we have an initiative on the ballot April the 8th. And if it passes, then the restructure is somewhat simple, and it's easy for me to provide that information. So what does happen is, in the fall of 2028, everything that was presented to you guys in the Long Range Plan will happen, okay? And what that is, we provided you with a desired state of what the school district would look like. That's two high schools, one in the north end of town, one in the south end of town. That's four middle schools, which in turn fixes your middle school model issue that you have right now. Those middle schools would be Lafayette, Benton, Bodie, and Truman. And then it's a 10 elementary model, and two of those elementary schools are currently serving as, two of those elementary schools are currently serving as middle schools. So it would be a two-high school, four-middle school, 10-elementary system. And all of that would go into place in the fall of 2028. Nothing would happen until then. So you don't go change boundaries and then change boundaries again in 2028. Everything would happen at once. Every student that would fall on the south end boundary would attend the new high school. Every student that would fall in the north end boundary would attend Central High School. And then we would go through that process again. And LJ Hart was here three months ago, and they provided you with some background information as to what that would look like from a financial standpoint. So you would have a specific amount of no-tax increase in 2031, and you would go through the same process to build the high school on the north end. So, and then, you know, your second option, if it doesn't pass, on April the 8th, the Long Range Plan still states that we're a two-high school system. Those two high schools will be Central and Lafayette. The reason for the choice of Lafayette over Benton is strictly because of the number of seats that are, can be occupied in those two buildings. It's still going to be very tight to put 3,000 kids in those two buildings, but that is the only thing that it states can happen.
So is parking.
So, so what, so what'll happen then? Obviously, if Lafayette serves as a high school, it can't serve as a middle school, which in turn brings Rubidu back on the middle school list. And then it'll bring Pershing and Eugene Field back as options for elementary schools moving forward as another north-end school because you would need seats for elementary students. It also states that that would happen in 26-27. There are some decisions I believe that the Board of Education is going to have to make. Those conversations are going to have to start on April the 9th because there will be a lot of planning that has to go into place to make that happen. You know, what does a remodel look like for the two new high schools? Right now, in the Long Range Plans, it's stated that we would put something on the ballot in April of '26 to remodel those buildings. But I'm not so sure that, in my opinion, it shouldn't happen in August of 2025 if you're going to go that way, just because you give yourself more time to plan for that. Because if you wait until April of '26 and then try to go to a two-high school system in the fall of '26, it's going to be pretty tight. But, you know, I think that as long as everything is out there and out in front of the community, I think that's, you know, that's what's in the best interest. So at this time, I know that's a lot of information very fast, but I know that there were some misconceptions or some false information that was being spread. And so, you know, I've presented probably over 40 presentations so far. And, you know, I do my best, but obviously, you can't, can't touch everybody. So I thought it'd be good for us to bring it up in a public meeting.
Can you make a request for audience members to hold their comments, please?
Yes, can the audience please hold their comments? Thank you.
So, April 9th, we're going to have to make a lot of decisions, no matter what happens.
Yeah.
So the election will happen on the 8th. Our next work session and the reorganization is the fall, two-fall, two Monday.
It's one Monday after that.
The 14th. So on the 14th, so we'll do the reorganization. And then immediately after, we'll go into a work session. I'm assuming we'll have a long-range plan on that work session.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Probably that, and then I believe there's only going to be one other item because that'll take up a lot of time.
Well, and then the other thing is, I don't, I mean, I, at some point, you're going to have to have, potentially, any ballot language that you want to put on for August is going to have to be approved in May, along with whatever, so we'll have, I hate to even plan that that doesn't happen, but again, there's people spreading so much misinformation that it's hard. So if that were to happen, we would have 80 million, we would still have that 80 million no-tax increase bonding capacity, but we would need LJ Hart, we would need something pretty clear about what we're going to do with that.
Yeah, and it actually, yes, that, you definitely would have the 80 million, probably plus a little bit. If you waited till April '26, it's probably going to be closer to 90 million or 95 million, whatever that looks like. But in August, I would say it's going to be very similar to what you have in April.
Well, I'm just thinking about from another campaign structure or another ballot initiative structure of you're going to have to have a lot of information about, you're going to have to have ballot language end of May, and then you're going to have to start being able to, again, clear up misinformation with a new part of the plan and what that entails.
Yeah. And, you know, the plan was not to speak to that too much because obviously, you don't build a plan for it to fail. And so that's why, but, I mean, it's kind of forced our hands, and that's okay. I mean, I don't have a problem talking about it. But I just think there's going to be a lot of decisions that the board's going to have to make in April, just either way. That's why I wanted to bring it to your attention tonight.
I appreciate it, thank you. Are there any questions?
Okay. Yep, the second piece of information was paid parent leave. I know that we've talked about that several times over the last couple of months. And I did have Dr. Seagris to gather me some information. One thing I will tell you, there's nobody on the west side of the state that's doing it right now. We couldn't find anybody that had paid parental leave. It is somewhat popular on the east side of the state. And a lot of the, you know, our conversations were around the cost. It's hard for us to say that it's going to increase the cost because you have those costs built into the budget anyway. So the only thing that I could tell you, it's probably cost-neutral, but you wouldn't have cost savings for the people that aren't gone. So you'd just be increasing the cost of the, but it is built into the budget. So, you know, I just wanted to put that information out there. I have some copies of some policies. If the board chooses to move forward with this or wants to talk about that a little bit more, I can provide that information for you. One thing that I would caution you of, you'll see sick leave banks in some of these policies. I would caution you to stay away from a sick leave bank. And the reason for that, it's hard to manage those things, and it's hard to tell somebody, "No, that it does not qualify." And there was a sick leave bank here in St. Joseph. Right, Dr. Kraus, didn't they have one right before I got here?
In my time here, I'm not sure. A long time.
Okay, so they did have one here. We had one in my previous district for over 15 years and got rid of it. It's just, it's hard to...
The larger your district is, the harder it is to manage.
So when you look at that, I just wanted to let you know, the sick leave bank probably wouldn't be anything that we would ever recommend. But there are some districts that do some interesting things. And I'm happy to provide that information. If you guys want to move this conversation forward, then I'll do that. Just need to put it on, place it on the agenda as an agenda item, information item.
Can we talk about the work session?
Yep.
But, and I think we've had it on a couple informational items in the work session or so, but we haven't had, like, a policy.
Yeah, we've got now. So I'll send this out to you guys tomorrow. And you guys can look through it and let me know what you think. Okay, and then the last thing, I apologize, but I have to pull up my phone, I forgot to print this one off. There were some questions in regards to middle school principal, the position, middle school principal because of what they do. They serve as the athletic directors. Assistant principals, I'm sorry. Middle school assistant principals also serve as the athletic directors. And so there's been questions in the past, is it too much? And so we had a series of restructure meetings in the month of December, January, and February, where there were middle school principals who served on that. I believe there was a middle school assistant principal who was in that room as well. And there were 11 items that I provided to everybody in that room that day. And so I created recommendations for the next administration, provided those to Dr. McGinnis on what I would do. provided those to Dr. McGinnis on what I would do to help restructure the district or fix the system. And the middle school assistant principal position was one of those. And I think, this is what I stated, I prioritize the essential functions of these positions and explore opportunities to distribute duties as necessary. And so I think it's up to them to, you know, meet with those folks and, and explore the options for twenty-five, twenty-six. So I just wanted to let you guys know what was said and, and what I provided as a recommendation to them.
So, can we start those conversations?
Now.
Now. And, and my, and again, if the rest of the board doesn't want to do this, then I'm only one board member. But, to me, if we wait four months, then those people are going to go a whole nother year with potentially overburdened job positions. And maybe, maybe they're not, maybe they're not as bad as I think they are, I mean...
Well, and that's, that's one thing that I would tell you throughout the conversation. It was a very low priority on the list.
Yeah.
And it did not seem, the conversations that I heard, I walked around the room and just listened during that conversation. I'll be honest with you, it didn't last very long, and there didn't seem to be a whole lot of concern. I don't know if you want to chime in on that, because you were part of that. You served as an assistant middle school principal one time, so...
Right. I think that having three of them being new out of the four also plays a factor in that, just learning the role. But we did provide some suggestions to the principals and middle school assistant principals. One being if they have rosters that they're doing for an event, that maybe a secretary could do that duty. Or if we have physicals that we're tracking, the nurses could assist with that. And so there were some recommendations that were given. I can tell you, as someone who was in that role, it is a lot. But I would also say that all of our administrators have a lot on their plate. So, I would caution the board to tread lightly, I guess, on that one, because I feel like if we're, if we're taking some things off of their plate, then we're going to have some others knocking on the door and asking for us to look at their job duties and considering things to take off the plate as well. I do know Dr. Gilpin is working with those principals and providing support and suggestions to those folks.
And I, so I, I don't really ascribe to if we help this person, then it might open the flood for us to help this person. Like, to me, that's what we should be doing. So I guess what I would just refer back is if it's, I've been identified, because I, I think I'm hearing two different things. So, Dr. Edgar, you're saying it was a priority, but then I'm also hearing that it's really not an issue, it's not an issue.
Well, I, I'm not saying it's not an issue.
No, I know, I can see that you're having...
It was one of the eleven items that I took to them. And I can tell you that it was towards the bottom of a priority after that discussion happened.
But I think, Dr. McGinnis, you make a good point that essentially, since you have so many employees and they could all feel a little overburdened, when we start to take a little bit less, or take some from someone's job duties, then others will want to feel that too. And to Ms. Lanning's comments, we should be doing that for everyone, but is it sustainable? You know, is it sustainable for us to run a district where we, obviously, we want our staff to be feeling healthy and to feel like they can manage their workload. But I know especially in the director positions and those positions that require more, feeling a little bit overwhelmed. I'm not saying it has to be part of the job, but it is something that we, when we're in a leadership position like that, we take responsibility for. So I would caution, I, I appreciate your caution, because it's realistic.
And we do take care of our staff. We do provide coaching and support. Part of that is mentoring for those folks, and we've done that. I've done the role, Mrs. Suter has done the role, I get it, I really do. But I, I can't say that I think it's any more than what any of our other administrators do. They all work very hard.
And, and I, I don't, I don't necessarily understand why it goes to that people don't work hard, or that we don't have policies, or that we can't get every, give everyone everything. What I'm saying is, it was listed as a priority. And so if it's a priority that has been identified now, to me, waiting another year, or telling these people, like, you're just, you're just too new, or you can have other, like, we're telling people, have other people do it, but then we don't want to look at it to see if it needs to be a different allocation.
I, I think we did, and I think it didn't come up as a priority.
Okay.
As one of the top priorities.
And that's, and that's what I, I just want to have a clear answer to these people, that it is not a priority for us.
As we evaluate positions, it didn't rise to be one of the main priorities.
Then we can just let it happen. I, I just want, I feel like sometimes we don't give clear answers. That we say, okay, it's a priority, but it's not quite a priority, but we see this an issue. If it's not a priority, that the support of education or the administration is interested in moving forward with addressing, then I'll leave it alone. And I think that's what I'm hearing.
I don't think it's that likely.
Is there a line in this drop that I move on?
Yeah.
That's what I'm asking you.
Yep.
Okay, let's move on. What's next?
Assistant superintendent's report. I'm done, sorry.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. McGinnis?
Sure, just a few things, and I left a copy at your stations, and Kevin's actually pulled it up for the public as well, and it's posted on Assembly. So, MCP six guidance, you guys know that is the guidelines that the state sets for districts to implement. That is currently being revised. So once we have that updated guidance from the state, then we will use that to create our updated CCP. And then once we have that in place, our buildings will design their school improvement plans. So everything will be aligned. So I just wanted to give you a heads up on that, and that that guidance is currently being revised through the state. And then the second item, career ladder, that program for this year will end on May fifteenth. DESI is also updating that guidance. It's already released, and they have included language from Senate Bill seven twenty-seven. And so there's not a ton of changes with that. But I did want to let you know, the state requires us to submit a application and a plan every year to participate in this program. I wanted to highlight this program, because I've learned that a lot of our districts surrounding us do not offer this to their staff. And so I was actually talking with a friend of mine who's considering coming back to our district, because her district doesn't offer career ladder. So, it has the stages there for what's offered. If teachers have two years, three years, or five years, and then the amount that is allowed per DESI, which is the maximum. Our district does do the maximum amount for career ladder, which I think is something we should showcase to people as we are recruiting. And then we also, as part of our plan, have to create an assessment committee. So if you remember last March, in our academics committee, we talked about career ladder plan, the development of that plan, and we had some staff that were present there. They are also going to serve as part of the assessment and review team. So they will look at that and tell us what were the benefits for our students, what were the benefits for our schools, what things should we consider, and they'll give us some feedback. I will provide a report of the whole career ladder program to you guys, hopefully in May. And that also has to go to the state, and it needs to be board-approved. So just wanted to let you know that those will be coming. And then the new application and plan will also have to be approved by the board before I send that to the state. Any questions about career ladder? I think it's been very well received by our staff. And then the third item, AMI application, so that guidance is also being revised by the state. I don't anticipate a ton of changes there. But I did link in our, our AMI plan that we have in, in place for this year. That will be revised for next year. You guys know we have thirty-six hours of AMI that we can use, and that's what we'll plan on doing next year. With Senate Bill seven twenty-seven, we have to have one hundred and sixty-nine instructional days. So the plan will be, we will have six days for six hours of that AMI time. And then, it's kind of a flip of what we're doing this year, but when we had isolated closures, so for example, when Field was closed due to heat, we would probably have them closed rather than do AMI, because our total hours for the district are going to be well over eleven hundred. And so we will use those AMI days for full district-wide closures. Does that make sense?
Makes sense.
Okay. And then the last thing, spring assessment. So I just put the testing windows on there for you guys for MAP testing and EOC testing. Our teachers right now are looking at a lot of data, revising instruction to determine what we need to do before testing time comes. And so that's very near to us. Any questions for me?
Was the sort of last, I think it was the work session? No, it was February board meeting. We had talked about AMI days, and then we had policy GB, CVC on there about the three-day limit for hourly staff. So it was on the, it was on the February meeting as an informational item. Are we doing anything with that?
I don't anticipate that we'll need to do that, because we were just going to allow everyone to work on those AMI days, kind of like we started doing this year, so they would have tasks.
We just take the three days out completely?
Do we need to revise the policy book?
The procedures?
Yeah, it's a procedure, but we can put it on there.
It may be a handbook, and you'll approve the handbook next year? Because it's not policy, it's handbook.
It's a handbook procedure?
Yeah, I mean, I know, and you, you guys told me that, but like, it refers to people's pay. So that's just what makes me think that if it affects how we pay people, that it ought to be...
Yeah, and we just strike that one line and just put AMI, everybody with work. So yes, I, we'll, we'll do that.
Yeah, that'll have to be updated. And then the other thing I forgot to mention with that is potential makeup days. So hopefully this bill passes to where if schools have built in one hundred and sixty-nine days, and then we have a district closure after our AMI hours, that we will be okay, because we've built the calendar for one hundred and sixty-nine days. But I can't bank on that right now. So if that passes, great, we'll be fine. If not, we're going to have to have some makeup days scheduled in our plan and communicate that out to families right when school starts. So I'll keep you updated on...
Do you anticipate those would come, like, at the end of the school year or over breaks?
Because my calendar is so limited on days. It could potentially be a PD day, which I would hate to do that. But it could be a PD day. It could also be spring break. It, it could be if we have Easter, Friday, or Monday, something like that. The problem with tacking it on at the end of the year is we start to dip into summer school. And so it's, it's just very tricky. We're limited on, on options towards the end of the year, so we would try to probably do that in the third, fourth quarter.
Because I don't feel like it's effective at the end of the year.
It's not.
Either, people are just coming to be coming, or they're not coming. So that's why I just curious where that might get stuff in there.
But I think it's important that we line that all out before the school year starts and communicate it to families.
Anything else, Dr. McGinnis?
Nope, that's it.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Okay, perfect. Approval of bills?
Uh, yes, you've had bills for a few days. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those. If not, I'd ask for a motion for approval of those.
So, ma'am? I have a motion for approval of the bills. Is there a second?
Second.
Whitney and Ken, whenever you're ready. Mr. Garing?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
The motion passes. Seven zero, Dr. Segres?
Uh, yes, financials, you have those in front of you. End of February, we're sixty-seven percent through our fiscal year. Operating is running at sixty-two percent right now, so we're in good shape there. Our expenditures are up by eleven point nine million this year. The areas that that really is, that impact is coming from, the three point nine million in salaries. That's mostly due to the increases we put there. One point two million in purchased services, one point eight million in supplies. Just like everybody else, our, our things are more expensive right now. And then about four point two million in capital projects, and a lot of that has to do with some of the bond projects that are going on, so we knew we'd have some increases there. Revenues, estate revenues are down by one point five million. We anticipated that because of the reduction in the WADA. And then our local tax revenues, though, are up seven point zero one million. That is due to the Prop C waiver passage in August, and then also some increases in AV as well. The healthcare trust is in good position right now. You have about three point nine million there that shows. And then also, we have a little over three point two million in the investment account right now. So the balance total is seven million, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars and seventy cents, which is up a little over one point two million from last month. And in comparison to the end of February twenty-four, we're up about six hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars there. So we'll talk a little bit more about some increases tonight. But right now, we're in a good, healthy position in the healthcare trust. So we'll be happy to answer any questions you might have there.
So that one, so it's up one point two, is that, did we already talk about why that was? Was that the timing? Because there were some issues in November that we talked about.
We had some timing on, on payments in the healthcare trust, yes, but those are all caught up now.
Okay, that was a little...
Are there any additional questions? If there are not, is there a motion for approval of the financials? So, ma'am? Thank you, Whitney, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mike, whenever you're ready. Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Mr. Garing?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Has the motion passes? Seven zero? Dr. Kraus?
All right, thank you. I've left the supplemental personnel report at your stations. On the personnel report itself, on page seven, section, Roman numeral twelve, line one, that person needs to be removed from this, she's taken work in a different capacity. So again, this is the, the personnel report, page seven, Roman numeral twelve, and not the supplemental. This, this was put in electronically. The person on that line has taken employment with us in a different capacity, so she needs to be removed from that particular line. Everything...
Can you, page, page seven?
Page seven, Roman numeral twelve, line one. Needs to be removed there, working with us still, but in a different capacity. And that's the only correction to that. The supplemental report itself, I don't believe there are any changes or modifications. This month is a little different in that you have some additional lists as well. One of those is the first-year tenured reappointments. That happens most traditionally when someone has offered their fifth contract. If they've been tenured somewhere before and come here, there are lesser times. According to the Missouri Teacher Tenure Act, once you are tenured, you have a, a permanent contract. So that's why we don't bring other than first-year tenured to you. They're assumed to be re-employed unless told otherwise. And then there also is a longer, much larger probationary teacher reappointment list. That would be for anyone who's coming back next year that does not meet the requirements for tenure. Are there any questions about any of those lists? If not, I would ask that you approve them all, with the exception of the change on the supplement, or on the personnel report. Page seven, section twelve, line one.
Is there a motion for approval?
I'll make it.
Make a motion? I have a motion in a second?
Sure.
A star and mark? Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
I'm staying.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Mr. Garing?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
I'm staying.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And the motion passes? Line with two abstentions. Lanning and Miller? Okay, action out of A. Five procedures?
Uh, yes, CMAR contract, NAPHOLKS. I want to recognize some people from NAPHOLKS who are here tonight. Brett Collins, Annie Hyde, and Jeff Gaddis, all here from NAPHOLKS. We had this almost ready for you last month, and we were back and forth a little bit with the lawyers, getting the language worked out. But you approved NAPHOLKS as our partner. But, uh, you approved, uh, NAPHOLDS as our partner earlier this year for, uh, the new high school project. Also, uh, within the last week, they have finalized their local partnership with EL Crawford. And so Eric Moore couldn't be here tonight, but EL Crawford is going to be local partner with NAPHOLDS on this project. So we're, we're happy and excited to announce that. So, uh, just ask that you formally approve the contract with them tonight.
Are there any questions? If there are none, is there a motion for approval?
I'm not.
Thank you, Whitney. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mike. Anytime you're ready, Mr. Moore. Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yep.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Williams? Yes. And the motion passes? Seven zero? Copy and printer extension lease?
Uh, yes, district's had a, an ongoing copier and printer lease with ProServe since 2019, uh, ProServe local company. Uh, the original term was for six years. Uh, in that contract language, it does allow us for renewal. We've vetted this all through the attorney and everything. There's a unique situation right now where if we renew this contract with ProServe, we get ahead of some of the increases that are anticipated. And actually, um, you have a copy of a letter from Rico that was sent to ProServe indicating with tariffs, there are going to be some significant increases, uh, in equipment and things. So ProServe has agreed to keep our costs flat for the next six years, uh, the same amount that we've had for the last six years. So, uh, we feel this is probably a really good opportunity for us to go ahead and lock in at that price. So I'd ask you to approve that copy and printer lease extension with ProServe.
Can I make a motion to approve?
A second.
Has a motion a second?
Do, so we don't have to rebid it?
We do, we do not because the language in the contract allowed for this. And it also, uh, falls under, uh, DJF AP one, where it qualifies as a single source, unique circumstances purchase, uh, as it's available at discount from a distributor for a limited amount of time. So, again, we ran this through the attorneys to make sure that we were doing everything above board there.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, we have a motion in a second. If there are normal questions, you can call the vote, please. Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Williams? Yes. And the motion passes? Seven zero? Okay, Dr. Seigres?
All right, uh, next is the health insurance update and renewal and funding that we'll vote on tonight. Matt Tritz is here again from Lockton. Uh, if you have any questions. Also additionally, we have, uh, provided some more information about our supplemental, uh, items. Are on the removal as well tonight. So, um, I'll let Matt talk just a little bit about, uh, what you have here.
Excuse me, good evening, Robert or the, Dr. Seigres, the documents gonna go on the screen?
Are you gonna pull that up for him real quick? The, uh, yeah, contributions for work session. Which one? Contributions for work session.
Contribution.
Yeah.
It's a slideshow, right?
Yep. Just tell you. We're good right there for a second. Thank you, sorry about that. Come on. That's okay. We're on hold anyway. Uh, my name's Matt Tritz, uh, with Lockton. I was here about a month ago in, uh, for the work session, and we ran through a little bit of history about your health insurance program, historical cost, and then projected costs going into next year. Reminder, your plan renews July first, um, coming up. So we talked about a few scenarios, um, and I'll spend a minute and reorient you with this page and what we're looking at here because there's a lot of numbers. But really, we've put together, um, these are the same as last time, except we had one option that the board asked to look at, so we'll, we'll, we'll take a look at those. But, um, what we have here on the left side, two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five rates by month, um, so that's current. And then you can see just kind of working down the sheet, uh, PPO plan, EPO plan, high deductible health plan, and you can see corresponding enrollment. And then if you work your way left to right, the full rate, funding rate, that's the full cost of the plan. HSA seed is what the, what the board contributes to those, and the high deductible health plan, just on the bottom. Then there's a gross rate, and then there's the twenty-four, twenty-five employee contribution. Those are payroll deductions by plan. And then we've got the percentage split and a net, net monthly plan cost, which shows thirteen point four million right for the district, ending June thirtieth this year. So same set of numbers, if we just go to the right side, this is projecting forward, twenty-five, twenty-six. We're looking at it like a ten percent increase, ten point four. This scenario doesn't change any of the benefits or any of the plans, and just passes ten percent on. That's the total cost increase this year for the plan. So, um, this scenario just passes ten percent along to every person that's enrolled, no matter what plan they're in. Everyone would get a ten percent increase, this scenario.
And we would, we would take a ten percent increase as well.
Yeah, um, what would happen here, your net monthly cost, so, um, I would be comparing, current year, we're gonna finish thirteen point four, it would go fourteen point eight two five. I mean, you can see there, about ten point four percent total. So again, that's no plan changes, and just, uh, passing on about ten percent increase to every individual.
And Matt, I just, I just literally got this email from Bailey from Lockton. I get it monthly, but I didn't have it yet. Uh, right now, the EPO this year is running at a deficit of one million, twenty-five thousand. It's running at a hundred and forty-four percent funding rate. The PPO is running at one oh seven, with a deficit of two sixty-three, and the HSA is running, um, at a seventy-two percent rate with a surplus of one point three. So overall plan is at ninety-nine point nine percent funding ratio, uh, with a surplus of twelve thousand. So, uh, the plan as a whole is running right exactly as you'd like, but, uh, as we've talked about, the EPO is, is becoming pretty, pretty hard to maintain. And this plan here, scenario one, spreads the increase out evenly amongst everyone, including the district.
Okay, we'll go to the next slide, please. Kind of along the lines that Dr. Seigres said, the EPO plan at the moment is the worst performing plan. And this scenario, um, raises contributions, uh, the most in the EPO plan. So you can see, um, you kind of have to look at the difference, twenty-four, twenty-five contribution. If I ran down the list currently, like for employee only, ninety-seven, twenty-four, do a eye test, nine, twenty-nine, twenty-four, six, sixty-two, seventy, one oh seven oh. And then if you go over to the other side and look where the numbers are blue, you can see what they would go up to. So it's substantial, um, increase, heavily weighted towards that EPO program. Producing a lower net cost, you know, the, the slide before, I think it was fourteen point eight, this one is fourteen point two. So about six percent to the district versus ten. Next slide, please. Uh, I think this was in there, uh, last time. We're gonna skip right by this one. There wasn't a lot of questions and very little interest in this scenario. So let's go to slide four. So remove equally, EPO plan and split the increase equally. So in this scenario, the proposal is just remove that plan altogether. And you would have a PPO plan and a high deductible health plan with the HSA, which are both great options. No network disruption, and anyone that's in the EPO now would have a choice for healthcare that's less expensive than what they have now. This, uh, trims off a little bit of the cost. Instead of ten point four for the district, it's a nine percent increase.
So this is the one you would ask for them to run and bring back?
Can we do that one?
You can do any of the four. That, that's the decision you have tonight. If you want a recommendation, I'll give you my recommendation.
If it's not scenario four, then I don't need it.
Yeah.
What's your recommendation?
My recommendation is scenario two. Scenario four would be my second choice. And the reason scenario two, uh, those employees who still want to keep the EPO would still have that option for one more year, albeit at a pretty, pretty substantial increase. Scenario two also has the least impact to employees in the HSA and the PPO. And it also has least impact to the plan as a whole. That additional cost of the plan is about eight hundred thousand in that plan. In scenario four, it's one point two million. So that would be my recommendation. You may have to get rid of that EPO completely next year. We just have to see how many people still would want to stay on it. Uh, but it does give them one more year, the option, if they want to take on that increased cost, they can. And at the same time, impacting the employees on the HSA and the PPO the least, which, um, since I just got that email from Bailey, hang on a second, I'll tell you. Twenty percent of our employees are in the EPO, thirty-five percent in the PPO, and forty-five percent are in the HSA. So that would be the least impact to eighty percent of our employees by going to scenario two, and the least impact to the plan. But if the board doesn't want to go to that one, my next, my next suggestion would be four.
Do you guys feel like scenario two puts us in a good place competitively? So as we, as we compete for staff and, uh, and also retention, you know, I mean, I mean, does that put us in a good place compared to?
Yeah, and Matt can probably speak to this. The EPO is probably not even an option in many districts.
Yeah, so referring back to last month, we did go through benchmarking. We went through plan design, you know, value of the plan. We also went through the payroll deduction benchmarking, and your plan was very competitive.
Yeah, thank you.
The only thing I worry about with going, I mean, I'll go with two if it's better for staff. The only thing I worry about is just kind of picking the can down the road to have to do it next year, but.
Well, and, and my hope, my hope, uh, I will look at Matt when I say it's my hope, is our increase wouldn't be as, as much next year. Maybe that it, it comes back a little bit and it's not ten point four next year. Maybe it's more in a five or six percent range, hopefully somewhere in that, that area. Again, I can't predict that, but, um, our increase is not because of our claims. Our increase is because the market is trying to bring us closer to the market.
Well, and I feel like this gives people on the EPO another year.
Yes.
To think about it and to consider it too.
That, that would be the reason, uh, Rhonda, that I would support scenario two. Uh, scenario four is probably the best for the district, to be honest with you, in my opinion. But it hasn't been communicated to those staff members, and I think if you, um, this is a trend that has happened every year since I've been here. The EPO is just getting worse and worse. So my recommendation would be to go with scenario two tonight, and then start communicating with those staff members that the EPO is going to, uh, go away.
Can we see scenario two on the board again? Please? Here's your bill, Rick.
And you mentioned it's an increase to the staff and the district?
Six percent?
Yeah. The increase to the district's about six percent there. The increase, obviously, like I said, to the EPO is considerably more than that. But the increase to the HSA and the PPO employees is less in this scenario than it is in scenario four.
I make a motion to take your recommendation for scenario two.
Second. Okay. We have a motion in a second? Motion by Mike? Are there any additional questions? Okay, Mike Moore?
Ah, yes. Different voice.
Kim Miller?
Yes.
Asari Garcia?
Yes.
Rick Gary?
Abstain.
Rhonda Chesney?
Yes.
Whitney Lanning?
Yep.
Lamontani Williams, yes. Six with one abstention? And the motion passes? Thank you, Dr. Seigres? Casey?
It's me, Steph.
Still you?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Uh, we have a change order here at Turf and Track, um, in the, uh, letters being outlined on the school logo and everything, um, the contrast really was not quite right. Uh, so we have a small change order to that. We want that to look right when we do it. So this change order, it's the color contrast around that that, that looks much better.
Motion to approve? I have a motion from Whitney? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Rhonda, and you, uh, are you ready? Okay, perfect. You can call the board, Mr. Moore? Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
No.
Sorry, you threw me off there. Ms. Williams? Yes, and the motion passes? Six to one? Okay, is that also you?
It is also me.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, but then I'm done, so. Actually, this is a good change order. We don't usually get change orders this direction, but, uh, this is actually a change order that is reduction in price. They're removing some of the equipment, uh, from Bodie that they were saying, deciding was not required. And then they're adding back some recording equipment at Lafayette additionally. So, uh, the net change in this, though, is, uh, saves us about six thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars. So it's a good change order.
Make a motion to approve? I have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Are there any questions? Yep. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Williams? Yes, and the motion passes? Seven zero? Okay. Dr. Seigres?
Yeah, the next year reminds, so I like it when I can be up here all grouped together. Uh, the first thing on your agenda is the contract with supplemental healthcare. This is a contract for managed services for some of our candidates for our hard-to-fill positions like, such as our speech-language pathologists. Some of our, uh, peers are hired for this company. These individuals are hired on an as-needed basis, um, as required, to provide those services for students' IEPs. So this is when we just can't find people. We're required to exhaust all efforts. I've talked about that. Supplemental is the company that we've used for at least the past five years. They really have the best rates around. And so my motion would be to approve the contract with supplemental healthcare for managed services as written.
I make a motion. Thank you, Kim. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mike.
So this is included in the SPED budget?
Yes, it's all paid for through SPED.
Okay, so the only, so I had meant to ask this earlier, but since SPED is kind of along these lines. There's been chatter about, uh, reduction in force, the Department of Education, and there's been talks about elimination of the Department of Education. I know a lot of SPED service goes through, um, the department. Do we have concerns about what's happening there, or? And I know, like, obviously, we hear things, but you guys are.
I actually started a meeting, um, over, uh, the week before spring break, and, um, they told us at this point not to panic and not to be overly concerned, um, that they're, they're just waiting to hear. I'm hoping that no matter what, the money would still come through the state, and we will be able to provide services as necessary. So at this point, they're telling us not to panic about anything, that there's nothing specific. At least that's the meeting that I was in.
Thank you.
You know, in regards to the total budget, the federal government provides about nine and a half percent of our total budget, which equates to about fifteen million dollars approximately. And so, um, those funds being sent down to the state, and the state being responsible for those, I mean, it's, it's just too early to answer, uh, specific questions in regarding to that. Is it concerning? Absolutely, it's concerning, um, when you're talking about something like that. But at this point, we're still gonna educate kids the exact same way we educate kids, uh, come and do our jobs every single day, so.
to our jobs every single day, so that's our focus.
If there are no more questions, I have a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Mr. Gary.
Yes.
Ms. Lanning.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Ms. Garcia.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Chesney.
Yes.
And the motion passes. Seven zero. Okay, Dr. Anderson.
The next item for you is the contract with Beyond Interpreting Services. This provides services for our families and students who need sign language interpretation, like for conferences, or if there's a parent event at school, these are the people that we call in, and they will also provide us a substitute for our sign language interpreter that we have in-house. And so this is a contract that we use on an as-needed basis. We don't pay them unless they provide services, and so I would just provide a, please approve the contract as written.
I make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
I have Kim and Whitney.
Yes. If there are no questions, let's call the vote, please.
Ms. Garcia.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Chesney.
Yes.
Mr. Gary.
Yes.
Ms. Lanning.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Williams.
Yes, and the motion passes. Seven zero.
And my last item is an MOU with Truman State University. We currently don't have one of these on file with our district with Truman State, but they have, it allows us to provide practicum internship experiences for students that are coming out of college with communication disorders, that they're graduate students, they're going to be speech-language pathologists. So we have agreed to provide a practicum internship experience, and my hope is that we'll get more people that want to come and work for our district. And so this is really just a no cost to us, that we will allow that partnership and train those people while they finish up their schooling. So I would motion to approve the MOU from Truman State.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any additional questions? If not, would you call the vote, please, Donna?
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Lanning.
Yes.
Mr. Gary.
Yes.
Ms. Chesney.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Garcia.
Yes.
Ms. Williams.
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Okay, Dr. Kraus.
All right, well, to maintain the process of having three apiece, I've got the last three. First one's a criminal history record information user agreement. I think most of you realize we do background checks on all of our employees and any volunteer who is going to be alone with children, and the rest are run through the Raptor system. Every year, we're audited, and they ask us to sign a new user agreement. There's no cost to the district, it's simply us agreeing to fulfill the background checks in the manner prescribed. Are there any questions about that?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Audit was good?
Yes, we passed.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any additional questions? If there are none, would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Garcia.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Chesney.
Yes.
Mr. Gary.
Yes.
Ms. Lanning.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Williams.
Yes. And the motion passes. Seven zero. Good, Dr. Kraus.
Okay, the next item is the salary schedules for the district. Mr. Nolte is going to chime in here in a moment. These are all the same that you saw last time. AEL is still not in there, Adult Education and Learning. They're still working on theirs, hopefully it'll be ready to bring April fourteenth for the, for information purposes, and then the twenty-eighth to pass it. And then the other one that is not in there is Nutrition Services. Those are one of the two groups that we negotiate individually with, as they have their own collective bargaining unit. I'm fairly confident that one will be ready by April as well. And then there were a few changes made to the extra duty salary schedule, and Mr. Nolte is going to talk you through those.
Yes, as we presented the work session, Dr. Kraus, Dr. McGinnis, and Dr. Seagres and I sat down and evaluated kind of where that was, where we were at, and making sure, again, things are kind of equally distributed, somewhat distributed around the whole schedule. You know, comparing seasons, comparing different duties and things like that, to make sure everything was as equitable as possible. So there were a few changes, slight changes from the work study. I just wanted to go through and review with you a few of those changes, like in category two, there's two new items, the competition cheer and dance. We felt like if that is a longer season, and we have sponsors choosing to do that at each high school, then they would have that salary versus if they're just sideline cheer and dance, that would be in category, stay in category three. In category three, you have high school sports, such as cross-country golf, tennis, swim, and we also have orchestra, high school orchestra, that came up from category four. They were there with other middle school coaching positions. We felt like as high school coaches, their seasons and everything else with their duties, we felt like moving them up to category three was the right thing to do there. In category four, we moved middle school track up from category five to category four, and also moved middle school volleyball from category six to category four, which was probably the most inequitable one that we felt like across the board in the middle school setting. And we did move to category five from category six. We moved up middle school band, vocal music, and orchestra. We had some sponsors from those groups come and show us and demonstrate the needs for those, that movement as well. So when you look at all that movement, I will say one other thing on the back, one of the back pages, the department chairs, we consolidated middle school and high school department chairs. They really do a lot of the same work, even though it's two different grade levels. So we put middle school and high school, if the department's three to six people at the same rate, and also then we, the seven-plus rate, we moved them all, really, we moved them to the high school level plus the increase that we put in across the board. So those were the changes highlighted. I would say that, and I think I said this before, as far as the increase of this goes, approximately one hundred and thirty thousand dollars was already going to be spent with the eight percent increase in the two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars that we increased salaries at the beginning of this school year. So that was already going to go up because of that, that increase was already approved. The remainder of the increases, one of them was in category two, where we leveled out from category one to two to three. We made those even steps. It was a bigger jump from category one to two than from two to three, so we just equalized those out. It was about a six percent bump for that category two section of coaches. But that total, of all the movement, of all the changing and all the percentage changes, we felt like, and also remember, we moved those up to make us more competitive, and this puts us in a very good spot in the area. So the one hundred and thirty thousand was for the original part of it, and then three hundred and forty thousand was for the next part of that. So that's the cost for these increases that we're proposing this evening.
So the three forty is the total?
No.
Three forty plus one thirty?
The total would be four seventy. Four hundred and seventy thousand.
Three forty was going to go up.
The three forty was, we're changing all the percentages, moved the movement of positions, increases to be competitive. The one hundred and thirty was, of that four seventy was already going to be.
And just as a reminder, the base was not increased on these positions last year when we did the twenty-seven fifty. That was passed in August. So there is a pretty good increase to the base going on with these because there was that increase as well that was not on these positions last year.
And this is all, this is what we talked about in correlation to the fund balance? How that's going to come down, or where is this? So it's going to go four seventy, that's, where's that coming from?
We'll budget it in salaries and benefits next year, yeah.
I just have one question. I think this looks, it looks amazing, and I know that you guys put in a lot of work. I really appreciate it. I was looking at the schedule of the substitute pay, and I noticed that there's no change. Is there a reason for that?
I don't believe substitute pay is on this, is it?
I mean, that came through salary committee.
That's through the salary committee.
That was through the salary committee, and that was not one of the items that they ranked in the top portion, so we didn't bring it as a proposed change.
That was my only question. Are there any additional questions? If there are none, is there a motion for approval? Thank you, Kim, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mike. If there are no more questions, if you can call the vote, please, Ms. Lanning.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Lanning.
Yes.
Mr. Gary.
Abstain.
Ms. Chesney.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Garcia.
Yes.
Ms. Williams.
Yes, and the motion passes. Six with one abstention.
Thank you. Ms. Williams, can I interrupt for just a second?
Yes.
We may need to go act and clean up something procedurally, because there was a second part of the insurance that needs to be approved, that we really didn't discuss, the supplemental, there are not many changes. We kind of got caught up on the main health insurance, and I just realized we did not approve that part of it. Briefly, I can give you a real quick overview. They sent things out for marketing. For most things, there is no change. Pharmacy actually is slightly cheaper from last year. We should save about forty-two thousand. Vision went up just a little bit, and these are supplemental plans that people pay for, employees pay for, went up about seventy-six hundred dollars as a whole. So you've had those as well. I wanted to make sure. We need to go back and actually approve those supplemental ones as well, because I think the motion we had was strictly about the health insurance plan.
So was that the marketing summary document?
Yes.
And the total, is the total for all of those supplementals, the savings of thirty-five thousand?
Thirty-five thousand, yes. Sorry, we got caught up in that, and I was like, we probably need to go back and catch that.
I'm glad you called. Make a motion to approve the supplemental.
I have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Whitney and Rhonda, whenever you're ready.
Ms. Garcia.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Gary.
Abstain.
Ms. Chesney.
Yes.
Ms. Lanning.
Yes.
And the motion passes. Six with one abstention. Thank you, Dr. Seagres. Okay, last one.
All right, it's an additional teacher pre-service day. In the past few years, we've had two days where teachers new to our district came for pre-service training. We're finding that we're having an increasing number of staff who come from non-traditional, they don't come from traditional teacher prep programs, they come through Grow Your Own or Pathway to Teaching, and so it's been more and more difficult to get our teachers to a place where they feel comfortable with the first day of school, just having those two days. Academic Services was really wanting to add a third day, and they did a lot of work to make sure that every new teacher is going to receive the information he or she needs, and there'll be some differentiation. You know, for instance, somebody who comes from the business sector, education is famous for acronyms, you know, we have an acronym for everything, and so when we say IEP or PLCs to education people, they know what that means, but someone who's coming from the private sector does not. So they'll differentiate the instruction for those teachers, give them an additional day, and hopefully they'll be, feel more prepared when the kids arrive on the first day. The cost, obviously, will vary depending on how many new teachers we have. They're paid two hundred dollars per day. On the average year, we have somewhere between seventy and ninety, so it will range between fourteen and eighteen thousand dollars as a total expenditure. Are there any questions?
I do have a question about the differentiation part of it. Would that be differentiation on all three days, or just that one extra day? I'm just curious about that.
Yeah, so Mrs. Stuter leads that with our instructional coach team. So typically, they'll have one day that's in their building, and they get acclimated to their classroom and learn kind of the ropes of the building, and meet with the building principal and their mentor, and then they also spend time going over the lesson plan framework, our professional learning calendar, what mentoring looks like. They get into their content areas and specific strategies, so there's a whole lot covered in those two days. We just weren't able to do it all, so I think this third day would be super helpful to go over all of those pieces.
Okay.
Core resources, all of those things.
Okay. Are there any additional questions?
So how does that affect, so I assume that their contracts are built in with an extra day? Is that, that's worth two hundred?
They receive a supplemental contract. In the past, it's been for two days, so it would be for three.
So how does that compare? I know, so we got an email a couple days ago from a staff person that was talking about the salary schedule or the calendar, because we're taking down three days right from this year, right? Right, so we're reducing teacher days by three days.
They have three paid days off this year that they won't have next year.
Okay, so then will there be a difference between the number of days that a new, with the supplemental? Do you see what I'm saying? Like, if you have a, if you have a contract for a set number of days, and then you have supplemental for?
All of the, all of the first-year teachers will receive the same teacher contract that returning teachers do. They simply have three additional days that they get some pre-service training.
Right, and so then that's my point, is that they're going to have three additional days of pay? Is that what?
Yes, they get paid two hundred dollars a day for those three days.
Okay, well, that's, yeah, I get what pre-service means. I'm just saying that you have a group of staff that are going to make more money. I mean, I know they're doing more work, but I think that was to the point of the email that we got somewhat, and I don't know who else got that email.
Well, but they're all going to be, they're all going to be first-year teachers, so.
I know, but.
They won't make more money than other people.
You're saying because of the base rate that they're starting at?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve. You hear them, sir?
Kind of, they come in three days earlier than everybody else.
There's a motion that I was still discussing.
Their contracting is different.
I understand that, but that's what I'm saying, is that they're getting, it's fine. No one else is worried about it.
I understand what you're saying. I would also say that when we have snow days, traditional snow days, and of course, we won't have those next year, they don't come in and make up those days this year. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the difference between the pay and the days, but I'm the only one, so it's fine. Go ahead.
Are you sure?
It's got to be.
Okay, I have a motion. And there was also a second. If there are no additional questions?
I'm good.
Are you good, Rhonda? Okay, because I saw your face, so I'll have to make sure.
Thank you.
All right. Would you call the vote, please?
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Lanning.
Yes.
Mr. Gary.
Yes.
Ms. Chesney.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Garcia.
Yes.
Ms. Williams.
Yes, and the motion passes. Seven zero. Dr. Kraus. Is this not Dr. Kraus? You're not looking like Dr. Kraus.
These are the ones. B, L, M, and N.
Oh, yeah, I forgot. I forgot we're going back and getting those.
Yeah, so we're going to now cover the three items.
You're now C.
Yeah, consent agenda, so we'll call it action item L, and then D will be M.
LMN.
And, yeah, N, so. Mrs. Studer?
Hi, good evening. I, I'm thankful for K, you guys. I work with new teachers, and that has been one of the requests by new teachers is there's so much to learn. So I'm thankful for you. And I'm also thankful for Dr. Lau because I wish I was bringing with you, or to you tonight, a completed program evaluation for curriculum. I'm not. I am presenting to you a plan. In '23 and '24, last school year, we did a comprehensive audit of our curriculum, and it was conducted by the Northwest RPDC. And what they affirmed to us was our curriculum is well-developed. What they asked us to think about was the implementation. Because we know guides and ideas are all good, but it's that implementation part that we need to work on. And so what you'll see in the plan are three goals that we hope to achieve. The first goal is that, that teachers at 80% use those curriculum guides in their classrooms. The second goal is, what I've been working on very diligently, is to support each core with a core resource. There are some courses that we don't have a core resource for. Right now, we're currently piloting K5, a core resource in ELA. And Dr. Adams and I just met with the teacher, and we talked about the core resource and why we needed to have that core resource to support. And so what we're trying to do is establish core resources that teachers are using high-quality materials in their classroom. And the third thing that we've been working on as a team and academic service team, and I'm grateful for the system and process, is ensuring that we use assessment to drive our, our, it informs our instruction and curriculum. And so, for example, last week, I met with a teacher about her data in Mastery Connect with Algebra I scores. And one of the things that we looked at was like, what was, what was the projected proficiency for her class? And it was at 80%. And so where there were two students that we really wanted to provide some hardcore supports for. But we also looked at a particular question like question number nine. And in question number nine, what we noticed was everybody across the district did not do well with that question. And so what we are looking at is, in the core resource that we have right now, does it support question number nine? And so that third goal is that 100% of the curriculum revisions would be driven by our assessment, our student outcomes that we're seeing, so. And any priority that the state deems is a change in K5, K8, or K12 curriculum. So our curriculum is aligned to the Missouri learning standards. All we do is scope it out into units and place it. That is what works for our teachers and our, our students, so. I will bring you back the data after the program evaluation is completed. But like I said, we were at a different point in curriculum because we did go through a comprehensive audit due to the fact that we have a school placed in comprehensive. Are there any questions I can answer? So I guess the action item asking for is, is a permission to go ahead and, and lead up the three goals that I have in the program evaluation plan.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Are there any questions?
I, I have a question.
Sure.
So I'm looking at the evaluation questions.
Yes.
So my question is, when it says how you're going to measure, because I was just looking at the percentages and then trying to figure out how you're going to measure to see. So it says surveys and questionnaires, so are those the questions that you will ask teachers? Or there'll be different questions?
There'll be different questions. Right now, we're leading up work in math curriculum from a K5 standpoint. And we're using our math curriculum team to help us guide the documents that we have as a team.
Because I guess, I guess I was just curious then where the, maybe you just answered that, and I didn't understand. Where the questions come from that you will ask the teachers in order to assess measure one?
We'll use our teachers, our, our curriculum writing teams. Because it's not like the instructional coach team and myself write this curriculum. We bring teacher teams together.
Right.
And I'm real big about having teachers construct this with us. And so I would really value their insight into the construction of those questions. Though, that was Dr. Lau and I's ideas on how to lead the plan itself.
And then the, let's see, the second one about incorporating the core resources in the lesson plan format.
Yes.
So I guess I'm thinking young children, how they will give their student feedback? Or is this maybe not intended for younger students?
You'd be surprised on what, you know, some younger students would be able to state as what happens as a routine and procedure in the classroom. And so, for example, like the University of Florida, they have an explicit scope and sequence that they follow for the lesson design. And so a lot of times, we'll be working with students, and we'll say, okay, what happens next? You know, it's those routines and procedures that are so critical. And that's what you'll find in the lesson plan framework.
Yes, yes, okay.
Thank you for those questions.
You're welcome.
Are there any additional questions?
If there are not, would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes, and the motion passes?
Thank you, Ms. Studer.
Seven zero?
Early childhood, is that?
Yes. Thank you. So I have attached two different program reviews or evaluations, whatever you would like to call it. The first one was Parents as Teachers, so Lauren Kelly, our supervisor, she had prepared that for us. So overall, a goal that we have had is to increase the number of families that we see and really encourage our families to participate in a lot of our activities. And so you'll see even in this survey that that was something, people wanted some more evening and weekend, weekend activities, which we have, we have provided. It's just getting everybody to come, right? Everybody's busy, so we do have a lot of activities planned. We had a partnership with some grants where we got some referrals, and those have also provided some additional opportunities to get some students signed up, so for that. Do you guys have any questions for Parents as Teachers regarding the Parents as Teachers review? So a big part, I did separate them both out because we work collaboratively together. It's still part of our early childhood program, but it does have a different kind of set of requirements. But we feed together. So moving on into the actual early learning centers where we have our preschool age students. So going back to our Parents as Teachers, that's prenatal up through H5. But when, how we collaborate together is they perform all of our screenings, our parent educators do. So that helps us figure out where our students are developmentally. We offer that to all students in the St. Joseph School District regardless if you, meaning if you live in our district, you don't have to attend our preschool. We do have developmental screener, screenings available. So we ask them to come, and then that's how we also, through our early childhood special ed, look at Childfind to see if we see some developmental delays, and if we want to intervene and kind of provide some additional services. But going into the actual review, you'll notice that two years ago, well, actually, it was the 22, 2022, 2023, I believe, school year, we had a program evaluation then. And so I started off with the goals that we had at that time, and that's that blue box on there. And then basically answered those goals and like where we are, and kind of just basically gave everybody an update. I don't know how in-depth I should go on this, so do you guys have any questions? Or would you like me to speak more about a certain area?
Are there any questions, Ms. Lanning?
No, it is nice to know we have these programs. And I think there's a lot in our community that don't know we do. So it's nice to have something that draws the parents in, that families work together in this process. So that's, that was my desire, was that this word gets out because it's important, and it certainly helps our littles.
It does. It is our intervention, basically, for our littles. And so the one thing I will point out is on measure, outcome three, measure one, when you look at our growth, our numbers, we have been working really hard to increase our availability in, in our early learning center. And so with opening up or repurposing Mark Twain, we were able to add over 100 students. And we have about 30 more that should be starting Wednesday. So we'll end up 130 more than last year. And along with that, looking at our early childhood special education, we have identified more students because as the kids have come in, we have been able to look at the needs and therefore through Childfind been able to identify more of our students are, have some needs and get those needs helped early on.
It helps ahead of time.
It does, yeah. It's our, it's our intervention. Yeah, for kiddos to get them ready for school prior to kindergarten. Anything else?
Is there a motion for approval?
Thank you, Kim. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Ronda was a little bit louder.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney? Sorry. Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning? Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes, and the motion passes?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, who's got this next one?
I can take this one.
Okay, thank you.
So really, this item is a renewal of the ACT work key curriculum for Hilliard. And so all of our high school seniors complete a CCR assessment. The work keys is one option, along with ACT and the ASVAB. And so the focus on the work keys is applied math, graphic literacy, workplace documents. And Dr. Gilbey gave me a couple of notes in here. Each program completes 30 minutes every other week in the curriculum to help prepare for the certification test, as well as get more academic lessons, combining the work key curriculum with math lessons every other week for the embedded math credit at Hilliard for students. And then we are also looking at utilizing this at our high schools because we know we have a large, a number of students who would like to go to Hilliard, can't get into Hilliard. And so we offer work keys also at the three high schools, so we are looking into this curriculum for them as well. Right now, this is just a renewal for Hilliard.
Are there any additional questions? If not, is there a motion for approval?
I'll move.
Thank you, Kim. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mike. Would you call for the vote, please?
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning? Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes, and the motion passes seven zero. Now, Dr. Kraus?
All right, in your package, you had a redline post-contract for General Revenue Corporation. This is the company we would like to go through to use as a debt collection service. This is an information item tonight. The contract was originally sent to us by the group. We sent it to our attorney. Her suggestions are in front of you. And I just heard today that GRC has agreed to every change that she suggested. So I'll bring it again as an information item one more time, April 14th, and then April 28th, we'll ask you to approve it. Are there any questions at this point? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the last thing, information items, the attendance report. The March year-to-date attendance as of Thursday, March 13th was 83.24. The SJSD is holding steady at 83% heading into April. There are also some graphs that were provided to you that in this document, the 2017 to current attendance trends show the majority of SJSD's schools are above pre-pandemic levels. So as we continue to work hard and, you know, knock ourselves down in regards to attendance, we are making some progress and doing good things. So if you have any specific questions in regards to the report that was provided, I'd be happy to entertain those at this time.
Good, thanks for the information.
Okay, future meetings and events, April 8th is Selection Day. April 14th, 5:30 PM, Board Reorganization Meeting slash Work Session. April 18th, the district is closed for Good Friday. April 21st, the district is closed for Easter Monday. And April 28th is the regular Board of Education meeting at 5:30. Need a motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant 610.021. Close meetings and close records for hiring, firing, discipling, or promoting a particular employees and individually identify other personnel records.
I make a motion.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned.